This this meeting today will be is a continuation of the conversation or around the local acceptance of general GLC 33, section 59 of the benefits for military leave, commonly known as the Brave Act. We had a meeting, or I believe, at least back in the spring or late spring, early summer, regarding this pre pandemic. And the consensus was this was a good thing. It was something that would benefit those who are service both to their country and to the city of Springfield as public servants. And the only issue that we had was the financial impact on our community, the size of Springfield, with a police department and a fire department as large as what we need to staff. Is there somebody who is? Counselor Hurst, please.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me just just add just a little bit to what Counselor Edwards has said. We actually, Counselor Walsh and I, in hopes of trying to reach a compromise in terms of the number of days that folks would be afforded through the Brave Act, have had multiple conversations with Chad Chad Jacobs, who is the Union President for the Fire Department, in conjunction with Commissioner Calvi, as well as, I see Attorney Moore is on the line, and also TJ, in terms of what was possible with respect to days and and what kind of made the most sense, just to see if we could reach some general consensus. So we had a number of meetings, and then at the point in which we were going to bring it to the city council or to the subcommittee meeting, with some sort of what we thought might have been a resolution COVID-19 hit. On top of that, we know that this particular what is that file is going to impact the entire city. And so with that, and what we needed to have a conversation, obviously, Police Department, who I believe, and certainly can have that discussion, Mr. Chair, is receiving is receiving more days than what it was that we ultimately compromised to. And so so before I kind of get into the weeds, it might sense for Attorney Moore, who I see on the line, just kind of update us as to sort of where we're at, maybe what the act does, how many days we negotiated. And then maybe we could hear also from from Joe Gentile, who is the who is the Police Department Union Representative, as to what his thoughts might be on sort of an initial proposal. And again, this is just an initial proposal. There very well may be a lot of work that needs to be done. And then in light of COVID-19, I don't know if the financials have changed. And so maybe things are different from the city's perspective. And I also haven't spoken to Chad, who was unable to make it to this but will make it to all future meetings if we have more Mr. Chair, which I think are going to be necessary. So with that in mind, Mr. Chair, if we could just defer to Attorney Moore, just to give us sort of an excerpt as to as to where we've come. That that seems to me that might make the most sense, but
Of course. Attorney Moore, please.
Yes, thank you. And I think what President Hurst said was entirely accurate, to my my understanding. The parties had all sort of been negotiating on bringing something before the council that would address really the benefits that were, I think, intended to be given through the Brave Act. And it would make it a little bit more specific to Springfield's needs, and and really take away one of the issues with simply adopting the act, which is, at that stage, we would be sort of under the obligation to continue to meet the demands and requirements of the act, even if they were amended at the state level. We, I think the council has has kind of elected a good approach, which would be to sort of craft out our own ordinance, that again, kind of confers the benefits. In this case, it's kind of guaranteed to have a paid leave for city employees who are going to do training or deployment as a part of a reserve in one of the armed forces. The current ordinance that we have is a result of kind of discussions, as President Hurst very correctly stated, between the counselors, the city finance team, and, you know, members of the Fire Department and Police Department specifically for city departments. And what we really ended up settling on for the proposal so far is a a sort of overall guarantee of a certain number of days for people on deployment. And in this case, we were talking about the guaranteed number of days being 30 days with a built-in option to exercise four additional days of benefits if needed, without having to go get a sort of administrative permission. Beyond those 34 days, there are additional days eligible for parties if the cases warrant. And at that point, it would be a decision made by, I believe, the department head in conjunction with Finance Department, as to whether additional days be granted beyond those 34. So that's sort of where the the current ordinance sits. I was I was looking at a draft that we had prepared, I think. The most recent one looks like it was from the middle of March, beginning of March. So that would be very much what Counselor Edwards, I think, had had stated. So, you know, this document really is in a form, I think, that that reflects where the negotiations are at this stage. As for the financial numbers and impacts from COVID, I think that that's something I'd probably defer to our Finance Department on, if they wanted to just chime in on that one piece.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment as well to add some context to what Attorney Moore just said.
Please, TJ. Thank you.
Thank you. So the thinking originally, back when this came up, gosh, a year ago now, or close to that, was that the legislature adopted a local adoption ordinance that we've never adopted as a city. And there was up to 40 days of paid military leave. My conscientiation came as capital was when you adopt this law, you adopt it in perpetuity, and there's no way of undoing it. And if they change 40 days to 80 days, it becomes problematic for the city. So what I was hoping to do is craft a standalone ordinance that kind of mirrors the legislation, that gives us some flexibility, and allows us to you know, make sure that our employees that are deployed are kept whole. And so the first part of it was 30-day guarantee. Originally, it was 28 days. We rounded it up to 30. 30 became 34 because the Police Department has a max of 34. That has been going on for a number of years now. That allows us to have some of the flexibilities there. The other piece of it is having it be a make-whole provision. So what we heard loud and clear when we were negotiating some of the changes was people get deployed and they make less money, and they get, you know, threatened to get off their health insurance. So we said, look, health insurance should never be an issue for our active military that are deployed, for their families. They shouldn't have to be thinking about that stuff. And we 100% agree, so we can pay for the health insurance. Then there was a make-whole provision that if you happen to be making less, you can provide us documentation. We'll reconcile. We'll make sure you're paid, so you don't lose any money. That was kind of the first part. And then beyond the make-whole provision, if you end up making more because you're, you know, deployed at a different level of the of the services, then you're not going to provide us with W-2s or paychecks or pay stubs or whatever. But if you want to be make-whole, you can do that. So that's kind of the big parts of it, and that's where we were at. Our hands are a little tied, given the fact that the Police Department is doing 34 days from, I don't know, but it's going on for a while now. So we know we had to get to the 34 days. But I heard loud and clear from my Police Commissioner and Fire Commissioner that they need some flexibility to be able to build the ships. And as more and more academies are happening, I mean, just for example, last, this is February numbers. The Fire Department had 23 members that were active military, and the Police Department had 47. That could have increased based upon the latest academies out of both both those departments. I haven't gotten updated numbers, so I will get updated numbers from both departments, and I will update the analysis and the estimated number of military leave shifts that have happened. Just for FY19 alone, it was, or FY18, it's 1,249 shifts between both Police and Fire. Fire, they're more concerned than the Police in the sense that they want to run proper staffing on the apparatus and on the engines. And then the Police Commissioner has a little bit more flexibility if someone's deployed, to whether or not they have to back to those positions. So we're happy to restart the dialogue and see if this is still adequate, given the COVID times. Let's just start the dialogue on and kind of hit the restart button on if we have to.
Okay. Counselors, questions before I ask Mr. Gentile to speak on the issue?
I'm having a little trouble raising my hand using this new phone that I have. So I apologize, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
Can I say something?
Certainly, please. Go ahead. President Hurst, please.
Thank you. And TJ, can you just elaborate on the fact that you kind of did run the numbers in terms of the number of individuals who might exceed the 34 days? I think you did it in the Fire, in the both the Police and the Fire Department. I don't think there was anyone in the Fire Department that might exceed 34 days. Was that was that accurate? And I think when you did it for the Police Department, there were two individuals who, over the course of the last two years, did exceed those 34 days. And I think one of those was a deputy chief currently. So really, really, we're only talking about one individual, and I'd love to hear, obviously, Joe Gentile's take on it, but one individual that would be significantly impacted by this provision. Is that accurate?
So, yeah, I don't have the information to fire me off to dig it back up, but that was accurate from last February. There were two individuals that got over 34 days. And then the the other individual, so the idea of they're deployed more than more than 34 days, or if it's like I said, it's a yellow deployment, is that they may take the paycheck from the federal government or whatever the state government, I guess, if they're deployed by the National Guard. That's kind of the way we looked at it, with the make-whole provision as well. But it all, but it definitely wasn't more than those two. And those two, I don't think, have been doing it more than 40 in quite a while.
Counselor Davila?
More than 34. Apologize. More than 34.
Counselor Hurst, are you all set?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Counselor Davila, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to everybody. TJ, just to make sure I heard you correctly, how many days are we proposing now? 32 or 34?
We are, well, in the contract for the for the Fire Department, it's 17. So we're going from 17 to 34 total. And in the Police Department, it's been 34. But that was never adopted. That was just implemented some years ago.
Okay. And I was just looking over the nose. Did we finally figure out what the financial cost would be for the city?
I have to go back and dig up what it was. It was, you know, about 300 to 500,000, if I recall correctly. But I'll have to dig up the the analysis that we had prepared back in February. I don't have it at this time.
Okay. And just one my due diligence, you might answer this to Counselor President Hurst, but is there any concerns, any possible COVID-19 implications that we're going to be able to meet this demand?
You have this question to me at City Hall? At this point, I don't I don't anticipate any COVID-19-related issues to the Military Leave Act.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, TJ. Thank you.
If it's an appropriate time, I'd like to hear from Mr. Gentile, please. Mr. Gentile? Okay. Joe, can you hear us? We can't hear you. I think Mr. Gentile may be having some issues. Audio. Joe, are you there? Okay, we see you now. But we don't hear you. Still not hearing you.
Joe, in the lower left-hand corner, there should be, like, joined by computer audio. I don't know if you're on your phone or your computer. No, Joe. I think if you if you're on your phone, tap the screen, and then in the lower left-hand corner, there should be some audio control that you can click.
I wonder if Joe could just call in from his phone.
Joe did say that he, this is his first time logging into Zoom from the office, so he apologized if there were any technical difficulties on his end. Mr. Chair.
Is as he works through those, are there any comments or questions? There is no representative from the Fire Department, I take it, on this meeting?
No. He said they'll be at future meetings. I imagine that we would have had, that we're going to need at least a couple more before we move this matter forward. So they'll be at the future meetings.
Is there any other comments or questions that we can address through, while we're, while Mr. Gentile is working through his technical issues? Well, obviously, as our president has stated earlier, this won't be the last meeting. We will have to have others. TJ needs more time to work through some of the financials and its impact. I think that I, as Chair of the General Government Committee, will have a problem scheduling another meeting at the convenience of most of you. And most importantly, I guess, at this point, will be TJ and the representative from the Fire Department, and Mr. Gentile as well. If this, if this, if it's okay, if if Mr. Gentile, if you can hear us, and if you can jump in, it it's a resolution of your issues, technical issues, I'll be happy to kind of move, come back to the to this subject. But for the sake of everybody's time and efficiency of this meeting, if there's no objections, I'd like to kind of move over to the second item. And perhaps we can swing back to Mr. Gentile, if he can figure out how to be able to be heard on the meeting. Is there any objections to doing that? Okay, seeing no hands. Okay, the second item on the agenda tonight was a, I believe, first step has been passed of what is known as the Airbnb, an attempt to address the Airbnbs in the city of Springfield, short-term rental. And the one of the lead sponsors of that is on the call, and that is Counselor Letterman. So I'm going to bow to him and allow for him to speak on this issue.
Counselor. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for calling the committee meeting. As the chairman pointed out, this is a piece of legislation sponsored by myself, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Davila, Counselor Brown. And I believe Counselor Whitfield is also a co-sponsor, which was a piece of legislation that came about after conversations with neighbors in the McKnight and Forest Park neighborhoods, who were especially concerned with the short-term rental area. I do see Counselor Edwards, that it looks like Joe has joined and is now connected to audio. So I'm happy to. I can see he's now connected. I'm happy to defer back briefly, so Joe can make his comments and then return.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Mr. Gentile, if you'd like to speak? Joe Gentile, can you hear us? Weak.
Now you just got to unmute, Joe. You were connected, and then you muted. Tap the phone. Look in the lower left-hand corner. There should be a microphone. You click that, that'll unmute you.
Okay, we see you.
You you also can unmute him as well, Counselor Edwards, I believe, when you're in.
Okay.
I believe.
Joe Gentile. I see. Ask to start. Ask to unmute. Just push the microphone. I see where it says ask to mute.
Maybe you don't have that authority. My apologies, Mr. Chair. Oh, it says, yeah.
Okay. Is there, is there a way, does anybody have this, can text him to tell him what he needs to do?
We just ask him to, why don't we just call him and have him conference call him?
He said, he said, I'm trying, he said, I'm trying to get the call-in number. Do you have it? Does anybody have the call-in number available?
For the Zoom?
Yes, for the Zoom.
I have it.
If you could just read it to me, I'll I'll type it in the text.
Eight, eight, four, two, eight, four, one, one, seven, one, seven, eight.
Say it one more time, Counselor Allen. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Eight, four.
Yeah.
Eight, four, two, eight, four, one, one, seven, one, seven, eight.
All right.
But he needs the number to the actual Zoom link to then type in that number. So there's another number that goes with that. Hold on for a second. Let me see if I can locate the number that they actually use. And then he has to type in that number, and then he has to type in the password. Whoever set up the link, there's a one, there's a one-punch number that he can utilize. And I think it's focus. That's why sometimes they need to hit us with the whole link and not just the just the meeting ID, because people that call in, they can just do the one punch. They type it in. It dials the number. It dials the room number, and it dials the password all at the same time.
It's HT, PPS, what you actually, yes, the if.
What do you need? We can, I can put you on speakerphone. Are you trying, trying to get in? So Joe's been trying to unmute, but it's not working. So I've got him on cell phone. Why don't I just put him on speakerphone?
That'll be fine. Thank you.
All right, Joe, you're on my cell phone, speakerphone, and hopefully it will be clear to the Zoom people. Go ahead.
Oh, this ought to sound great, like like Justin tried to cover for me. This is unfortunately my first time trying to do this from a cell phone, which apparently is easier if you're just talking. I appreciate everything that's been done. There's actually been some progress made since the last time I was updated. And I'm very happy about making people whole. So I just, I just look forward to working with with everybody, the commissioners and Chad and you guys, and trying to get this thing done.
Did you guys get that?
Yes. Okay. Well, obviously, we're going to have another meeting, hopefully in the future, very shortly, within, and then at that point, we hopefully I'll try to coordinate it with TJ to make sure that when we do have the meeting, that he's comfortable with the numbers that he can present to us. Is there any other issues or comments, questions, or observations related to this item before we move on?
And Mr. Chair, it might also be good if Attorney Moore, prior to our meeting, to the next one that we have, can send around the draft proposal or the draft ordinance that that he's drafted for the council to review, as well as for Joe and Chad to review. And then in conjunction, if TJ could just send us the numbers, that would be great as well.
Well, for the purpose of efficiency, any relative information that would be under consideration should be shared with the appropriate people. And I think that should be given for all meetings going forward, regardless of the subject matter, as long as it's appropriate for the counselors to consider. It should be shared prior to meeting. It'll make things much more efficient, I believe. All right. Okay, I I don't see any hands raised. I don't believe I've heard any comments. And if there's no objections, I'd like to return back to conversation about the short-term rentals. And Counselor Letterman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Happy to yield and glad we were able to get, glad we were able to get Joe and his comments in.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
So as I was presenting at the beginning of the conversation, this piece of legislation came from conversations with neighbors, especially in the McKnight and Forest Park neighborhoods, where the short-term rental market is growing. Obviously, this is a new factor in our neighborhoods, and one that is becoming popularized across the country and around the world. But it's one also that definitely needs to face some sort of regulation, or else it could move from being a nice opportunity for some of our neighborhood residents to earn some extra income and bring extra visitors to our community, and instead could really turn into an inappropriate commercialization of our residential neighborhoods. And so we began crafting this ordinance at the beginning of the year, and have had a very productive conversations, both with the committee, as well as with various stakeholders, including Brendan Bailey from Realtors Association, who I see on the call, and his colleague Kevin Sears, and then also with our neighborhood councils and civic associations. Since having passed first step earlier this year, the ordinance, just prior to the pandemic, was formally endorsed by the McKnight Neighborhood Council, the Forest Park Civic Association, and the Pine Point Citizens Council. I also made presentations to the East Springfield Neighborhood Council. I see Kathy Browns on the call, as well as the East Forest Park Civic Association and the Indian Orchard Civic Association. And then Walter and James from the McKnight Councilor on the call as well. Obviously, many of us have been focused, rightfully so, on the COVID-19 pandemic since the time that this had passed first step. But given that we are returning to some regular business, I did want to make sure that this did not fall off of legislative agenda, and that we were able to get back on a committee meeting, having passed first step, to see if there are any other points that anybody would like to address before bringing it back out to the body for final passage. Just a quick recap of where the ordinance essentially stands at this point. It is an ordinance that calls for short-term rentals to be registered with the city, as is standard practice in the communities that have adopted such legislation. Those short-term rentals are expected to be owner occupied or occupied by the owner of a, any sort of ownership entity of that particular property. They're required to be inspected and present a plan for parking, as well as notify their abutters of the use. They are required to ensure that the number of guests staying in the property is appropriate for the size of the guest with a maximum number, based on the number of bedrooms available in the home. They're also required to remain free of code violations, and to ensure that they're up to date on all taxes payable as appropriate by the state statute. The other piece, another provision in the ordinance, is that we do reserve the right in the future to limit the number of short-term rentals in the city, if it does become a situation where neighborhoods are being saturated. So we do retain that authority at the recommend, with in consultation with the Building Commissioner and the mayor, is how we've written it thus far. So we do reserve that right in the future. That is essentially the ordinance as it stands. We did define a couple different types of short-term rentals, following another best practice that we identified, and have to give great thanks to Attorney Tom Moore, who's on the call, that has been instrumental in researching best practices across the Commonwealth in the country. The three types of rentals that we've essentially identified are the full home share, which would be a situation where you temporarily allowed your home to be used, but not more than, but you have to be there nine months of the year, and you could not rent to more than one party. The owner adjacent unit, which is you are full-time onsite at the property, but you have another unit within the property, such as a maybe a two-family or a guest house. And then finally, the, what is the most popular, which is just the limited share, where it's your home, and you are using a bedroom or two, uh, in an appropriate way in, in compliance with the ordinance, uh, to allow this. Um, so, you know, again, very grateful to everybody who's been involved. Essentially, this legislation is necessary, uh, because right now, these particular types of operations are really operating in a gray area. Some people are doing it really, really well and others are doing it in a way that inappropriately impacts the neighborhood. And so we need to bring regulations into effect in the city as other communities have done. And I'm hopeful that this legislation will, uh, achieve and accomplish, uh, those goals. So with that said, I'm happy to take, uh, questions, uh, yield to any comments or concerns that still exist. Um, and, uh, that would be appropriate at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, anybody who, uh, you'd like to speak, uh, could you raise your hand so we can keep the order? Otherwise, um, and I'll track a note of that.
Mr. Chairman, I think Brendan, Brendan indicated in the chat that he would like to raise his hand. I think he didn't use the raise hand feature, but I think that is the intent.
Brendan, please. Uh, Brendan Bailey, I believe, is the Realtors Association President. Is that accurate?
Uh, I'm the CEO, the Chief Executive Officer for it, um, but I, I appreciate that. So, uh, Councilman Edwards and, and Letterman, thank you again for, you know, continuing this going. Cause the sentiments are corrected. It, it's something that's very important. Uh, it's coming to Springfield and, uh, it, it, it needs to be regulated. It's going to be something that's very important for the, uh, the city to keep close eyes on. And again, thank you for all the work you did with us. Uh, I know we had a lot of suggestions and thought process and we both went back and forth with some really good, um, questions and answers to come up with some, you know, robust legislation. The only thing that was kind of left on the table from the last time that we all discussed this was the, um, requirement of owner occupied and whether or not there would be any flexibility in that going forward. We were of the, or we are of the position that we would like to see that not be a, a hard requirement where it's many like other Airbnbs that you go to where, you know, it is, it is open to do. Um, and we're just welcome to have any type of conversation. I know that there was some strong resistance to that in the, uh, previous time, but as always, open the conversation. So if, uh, that would be something we would like to look to in the future, we'd love to have that conversation.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody like to address, um, Mr. Bailey's concerns or observation? Am I missing anyone?
I think I saw Walter. I'm happy to, but I wanted to let it, I'll, I'm glad to address it, but I wanted to let if anybody else had something they wanted to say.
Walter, Walter Crawl, President of the McKnight Neighborhood Council, would you like to speak?
Nothing direct to Brendan. I have something separate to Jesse, if you want to respond or if anything that Brendan had to say.
Sure. Um, so, you know, owner occupancy, I think, was probably the, the broadest, um, issue that we considered during the, the first round. And, uh, you know, we did adjust the definition, um, with some good input from the Realtors Association. Also, our, our colleague attorney, uh, Michael Fenton, who in addition to being a city counselor, is a very accomplished, uh, real estate land use and, uh, just general legal mind. Um, and so we did make an adjustment for individuals who may own their properties in a trust or in an LLC as long as they are still residing in the property. Uh, but in my estimation, owner occupancy is the most important piece of the legislation. I think that, you know, if we look at the way that this type of housing has been regulated by the city over the last, you know, 20 to 30 years, owner occupancy has been the biggest piece. So if you look at bed and breakfast, which is essentially, you know, what an Airbnb is modeled after, right? It's a bed and breakfast without the breakfast, the part being essential, um, and using a much larger platform to market it. Historically, bed and breakfast have been required to be owner occupied. And as a matter of fact, bed and breakfasts have been regulated at an even higher level than what we're proposing right now, even though it's a similar use. I mean, under the current legislation, if you're defined as a bed and breakfast, um, which is traditionally being operated in a little bit more of a corporate structure than a short term rental might be. But even then, it's required to be owner occupied and actually requires a full special permit hearing by the city council. It's not allowed as a by right use. So I, I mean, as far as I am concerned with the legislation, I think we've taken that as far as it can go without, without drastically changing the intent of it. And I recognize that, uh, some people, uh, you know, rightfully so may, you know, feel that, that that's the wrong way to go. Uh, but in consultation with the various neighborhood groups and residents who are, you know, living in areas where these types of markets are, are booming, the owner occupancy really is probably the most important thing to them. Otherwise, I think we're scaling into commercial operations, which is really more of a zoning question. So I, I definitely appreciate, uh, Brendan, the point. I, I recognize, um, you guys are honor bound to bring that up and, um, certainly, uh, recognize your position on it. But I do think we've, we've come a really long way, uh, from the initial piece of legislation. So I know that may be kind of the final sticking point, but I really am appreciative truly of the Realtors Association for, uh, the various pieces, especially around privacy. Uh, I thought was a really good piece that allowed us to make sure that our residents who are operating these, that their privacy is, uh, protected as well. So, uh, that's sort of my thoughts on the owner occupancy piece. I think it's vital and I'm, I'm happy with where it is right now.
Attorney Moore, is there any comments that you would like to add, uh, from a legal point of view as to what we've been proposed? Or has, um, where we stand today?
No, I think, uh, it's a result of a lot of work, uh, done by the legislature as, as it's supposed to be. And, uh, you know, I think it's the, I think it's as, as good as it's going to be. And, and I think Counselor Letterman said this early on and it still holds true. It will be something that, you know, we're going to take a look at as, as it rolls out. And, you know, if there's need to amend it and tweak it here and there, we will, we'll do that, you know? And I think, uh, overall, right now, it's a very strong piece of, uh, you know, local ordinance.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Are any counselors? And, uh, I, I apologize if I didn't recognize all of the counselors. Obviously, you guys are not all in a row. It's a little bit different. Uh, but I want to thank all of you, uh, and we, and just for the purposes of, uh, those who are on the Zoom. We have had the presence of Counselor Hurst, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Gomez, congratulations, our future Senator, uh, Counselor Allen, and of course, Counselor Letterman, which we just heard from a minute ago. Want to thank them all and do any, and, uh, and Counselor Allen, uh, particularly for helping out with the call, which, um, with Mr. Gentile. Do any of the counselors have any comments or questions or anything that we need to discuss? This item did pass first step, I believe, back in the spring or late March. I'm hopeful to bring it back out, uh, shortly at the next available meeting. And, um, so is there any counselors have any comments or questions that, oh, Tim, I see your hand is up. Please, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, my question is just, Jesse, there had been some other points of view, uh, expressed by Kevin Sears, and I'm not sure if there are other people, but I know Kevin came to a meeting or two. Is this an agreeable, have we addressed the things that he brought up at that time? Or was he not able to make this meeting? Or did you just speak to that?
Certainly, yeah. Kevin, who is, uh, my friend and neighbor as well, uh, did bring forward a number of concerns, I think, in, in, in his role with the Realtors Association as well. So I think Brendan is kind of speaking to those. And I, and I do think, if I'm not mistaken, and, uh, you know, would defer to Brendan, I think we really have reached compromise and agreement on all of those, with the exception of the, the owner occupancy piece. And I think that that's just a difference of opinion, uh, but a, you know, a vital piece of the legislation in my view.
Okay, thank you.
Brendan, uh, would you, uh, or actually Brendan, would you mind if I listened or heard from Kathy Brown, uh, representing the East Forest Park Civic Association, and then I'll get to you shortly. Ms. Brown, Kathy, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just unmuting.
Okay, you, you are unmuted.
Now I am unmuted. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It's the Springfield Neighborhood Council. I want to thank everybody for the long hours you've spent working on this. It certainly is necessary for this kind of, law ordinance to be in place. I just want to say that the owner occupancy for East Springfield is pretty critical also. And also, um, I assume that we've got a really strong commitment from the city to monitor compliance and enforcement. Because that's sometimes when, um, legislation gets put in place, that piece isn't carefully thought through or isn't carefully committed to. I expect in this case it is, um, but I just felt it important to bring that out. But thank you again for everybody's hard work on this.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Please, Counselor Letterman.
Yeah, Kathy, thank you so much and thank you for hosting me, uh, in the before times, uh, when we were, uh, meeting over in your great building over there in East Springfield and got to get some early input from the East Springfield Council on this. Um, and actually, we've had some really good conversations with Tim Sheehan, uh, the Director of Planning, uh, who has already been approached by a number of, uh, very affordable compliance companies. There's a really a niche market around this now. And so what they do is they cross-reference all of the different registries, different tax registries and things like that. And they are able to identify using the short term rental websites, um, when these pop up. If they pop up in an unmonitored, or in an unregistered location, uh, then compliance could be, uh, brought forward. And then, of course, we'll also need to rely on our residents, uh, being the eyes and ears, uh, and reporting in when there's concerns. But I also hope that, of course, we'll be able to be proactive in making sure that the public is aware of these types of, uh, uh, regulations that are going into place. I think that the short term rental websites themselves are starting to become better about pushing for their, or at least notifying people who sign up that there may be, uh, registration requirements in your community as these types of laws spread. And so, um, it'll have to be a combination of all of those things, uh, in order to make sure that it's successful. But we do have an implementation timeframe in the ordinance. It would take effect nine months from passage. So there will be additional time, uh, for the, uh, Director of Planning and the Commissioner as well to be able to put into place any pieces that they need. It'll also go into the next budget season. So if they need to make any requests, uh, they'll have time to do that. And, uh, furthermore, I think that the, uh, I also think that there's just a, a really good sense of folks who have been involved in the process thus far. So, um, looking forward to hopefully seeing it, uh, come out the other side.
Thank you for the thoughtful process.
Mr. Walter Crawl, President of McKnight Neighborhood Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank all you guys that have been involved with this. To me, this is functional government because you came up, there was a need in the community. There were listening committees, you know, Jesse and Val had hosted something over on Gasoline Alley. But it's, it's kind of, you've met with interested, interested parties, talked through this thing, what the quality of life impacts are, and it's changed, right? You've taken input from all, from all parts. And I just applaud you guys on the process. I think you've come up with, um, a great solution that isn't heavy handed one side or the other. The only thing that, um, I would caution is there isn't anything around density. And so one, one concern is that you're, you're subjectively leaving density out to, that, as it comes out. So, um, that's the single most thing that I've seen having one on my street and the concern for my neighbors is that, um, once you have one on one street, you could have one next door, you could have one abutting in the rear on the side. So density is the one thing that's kind of left subjective. So I was just cautioning you guys to, um, keep a target on that as to how you're going to measure what's too dense, what buzzles the density and how are you going to be fair? If I apply and Kathy applies and you say no to Kathy, but not me. But I applaud you guys. I think you've done a tremendous job at this.
Uh, anybody would like to try to, is there, is there a response, appropriate a response to, um, the comment about the density, either Attorney Moore or Counselor Letterman? Or I believe, um, Counselor Whitfield was also a, a sponsor of it and she is on. But is anybody would like to try to tackle that one?
Well, first, you know, thank you, Walter. And, um, and Walter had, was one of the first people, I think, to kind of come forward as well from the neighborhood council and say, hey, you know, we need to take a look at this, uh, and the laws around it. I, I think the density issue, I definitely hear, um, as I mentioned at the beginning, we are, you know, retaining the right to limit it in the future. I think the, actually, the points that you've just raised are kind of the, the reason by which I think we, we haven't decided to limit it as of yet. Um, and the reason is, is that at this time, you know, we don't, we, we, there was a feeling that we didn't want to make it a fully special permit process. Because a full special permit process is really a different vibe. It's a different, um, you know, it requires different things from the individual that's looking to do it. It can be, you know, it costs some money. It, uh, can become political in a way. And so we, you know, we didn't want to, to be discriminatory in that way necessarily. But we also, you know, don't want to say, um, we also don't want to, in that same respect, when you don't have a special permit process, there's not a hearing, right? It's an application process. And so if they meet the criteria that we are setting out, um, then it's believed to be appropriate. So if it's an appropriate size, there's an appropriate plan for parking, it's owner occupied, it meets all these criteria, then at this time, it would be allowed as long as they maintain the code violations, maintain all of that. But you can be revoked. And so just because you're granted the permit doesn't mean that you keep the permit if you begin to violate the terms. And I think that the things that would lead to the neighborhood, um, becoming impacted in a negative way is if the terms of the permit were violated, right? So if you are violating how many people are allowed to be in there, if you're hosting by the hour, if you're hosting parties, um, in violation of the ordinance, you would then, you know, your, your permit would be revoked and you would no longer be able to operate. So I think the idea is if people are operating in compliance with the ordinance, then hopefully you want, and it's owner occupied. So you won't see a situation where you have a whole bunch of streets that just turn into commercial zones. So that's, that's the current thinking around it. But to your point, as we see the industry develop, we can go back and, uh, and be able to amend the ordinance as needed.
Brendan, would you like, I, I saw your hand was up. I didn't know if it was from the first question or is it a response to some of the things that have been said by some of the representatives from the neighborhoods?
It was specifically to, uh, address, uh, Councilman Allen, because he had some questions about, uh, Kevin's concerns. And, uh, so I was just going to talk about some of that.
Please.
Yeah, uh, Councilman Allen, um, so Kevin was, uh, with myself as, you know, representation for the Realtors Association of Pioneer Valley. And, you know, some of the things that there was questions about that have been changed in the legislation now, dealt with things, um, like the type of registry that was going to be created. Also, definition of owner and, and, you know, a real human and how all that's going. And we've went through all conversations with that and that's good. There was one outstanding thing, and I don't remember if it had been resolved or not. Last time we were talking about this, um, and I think it was last general government meeting before it went to, uh, passage for first step, uh, was whether the building inspector had the opportunity to weigh in, um, on this, on this at all. Uh, was that ever possible? Was, was he or she ever to, uh, give, give note? I, I just don't remember. I'm trying to remember.
We did have the, uh, we had a representative of the building commissioner at one of the meetings. And I saw the building commissioner on this meeting. Um, I think he may have left. Uh, but he didn't raise his hand. So I, but I will, I will certainly ensure before passage of final step, uh, that he has checked in with again, uh, if there are, uh, any outstanding concerns.
Right. No, that, that's, that's fantastic. Uh, and, and also, Councilman Allen, the other thing that Kevin and the Realtors Association had a concern about was, you know, um, making sure that we're staying in line with what sanitary code requires as far as occupancy and things like that. And, and we've done that, which is, which is really good. And, you know, I, I think, uh, Counselor Letterman had a really good point just a second ago. And this is kind of like where, where the, where the difference of divide is a little bit. And that's why we have these meetings, because it's good to have the conversation of owner occupied and whether it is or it isn't and all that, to the degree of occupation, things like that. And our, our real stance with it is it's not that, it's the, we regulate it as much to the teeth as anyone could want to because that keeps the bad actors out. And that was always the intent of, it's not just do it just for doing it sake, but let's allow the good actors to have the opportunity to use their property as they see fit. And if you know what, if they do not meet it, Counselor Letterman said it, they can be revoked. Kick them out, you're done. You can't do this anymore. You're not playing by the rules. But if you're an individual who's a good actor, who wants to play by the rules and wants to bring this, uh, element to their property, then it's kind of our stance that, that that's a reasonable, reasonable request. So, but that's again, where we kind of have, uh, hit that divide a little bit. But I appreciate everyone's comments and I appreciate being part of this, uh, committee today.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that.
Uh, Counselor Dobyla, I see your hand was raised. Uh, you have to unmute, Counselor.
There you go. Thank you, Chair. Just to speak, um, uh, address some of Walter's, uh, concern before, maybe Counselor Letterman can, uh, shed some light on these. I do believe at the beginning of this, uh, with regards to density, we had been talking about, about the city having the ability to track the density itself, uh, as to where the permits are going to be going. I'm just kind of a point of information. Do we know where the city is with that? Where we are with that, with that suggested, um, step?
Jesse, if you want to jump in, I think, I believe he mentioned it really right in relation to, uh, Tim Sheehan being, uh, bombarded with, uh, and companies, but.
Yeah, the Chair is correct, Counselor Dobyla. So, uh, Tim Sheehan has already identified, uh, several opportunities for individuals or compliance companies, um, that can help us track density. density, help us track unregistered units. He indicated that they were very affordable, as I mentioned. There's a, there's a, you know, nine-month implementation period, so plenty of time for the department to be able to make any requests necessary.
I'd just like to share to everybody that, in fact, I have about 20 minutes before this meeting, got an email from one of those companies. I generally get at least two to three of those a week. I don't keep track whether it's the same companies, but they have, I've heard from multiple companies, at least had outreach from multiple agents as well, related to this issue. And I'm just, I felt like it was not, I had no authority to engage them on behalf of the city. So Tim Sheehan is the appropriate source for that. Is there any other comments or questions? And TJ, TJ is no longer here, but I believe there's a representative from the Finance Department, Lindsey Hackett. Is Lindsey, is there any concerns, or anything that you would like to add as a representative of the city related to finances? Okay, thank you. That being said, anybody else have any questions, comments, observations, or complaints? If, if there's nothing else to be said, the, we do have Coram, myself, and Counselor Letterman. This item did pass first step. I'd like to get a vote for either your recommendation for what is, to bring it back to the floor. Counselor Letterman, are you, think that's appropriate? And if so, would you like to make a motion to do so?
Mr. Chair, I am not completely certain that we necessarily need a motion, but we can be sure to do one just to be safe. And that Counselor Hurst is also a member as President. So we actually have three voting members present. So I would, I would make a motion at this time that we refer this ordinance back to the full body for our next meeting with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 And I, without, without any concerns, I believe we have a unanimous recommendation to bring it back to the floor. Are there any other questions or comments that this time that we need to address? And if not, I want to thank all of my colleagues. I want to thank all of you who have taken their time out of your day to be with us today. And I greatly appreciate your comments, and I hope that the concerns have been addressed appropriately. And we will meet again, and, and under the same forum, at, in a very short amount of time, on other issues as well. And I believe that this format will be the one that the City Council will either ultimately pass or not this item, because I believe, I don't think this is something that's going to last into next year, the use of the format that is, or this issue, anyway. So that being said, any objections to closing this meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Be safe, be well. And we'll see you when we see you.